We spent most of our time over at Sandy Neck Beach.
So I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. If we can have everybody's attention. This is the Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals, Thursday, September 1st, 2022, and it is the continued hearing of limited dividend affiliate of WP East Acquisition regarding Zero Summer Street Assessors Map 24 and 17 lots 112 and 111A. So we had submitted to us were comments from both Cliff and Sean. Did you folks get a chance to review those at all?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have any questions initially or no? So if somebody from the petitioner wants to come up and... So you have a... You submitted a new plan, correct?
So we were here, if you remember, two weeks ago. For the record, Mark Sec, AP East Acquisition LLC. We were here two weeks ago and we had previously submitted some updated plans just prior to the hearing.
Is this good, Kevin? Great. Again, for the record, Mark Sec, AP East Acquisitions LLC. We were here two weeks ago and prior to that hearing, we'd received some feedback from your local conservation commission as it related to the wetland flagging. So we had shown up at that hearing with a revised plan to stay out of those wetlands and which resulted in a loss of parking spaces. That was the only change from the prior submittal. So we know that there was some confusion as a couple of the plan sets had different dates. So we have since resubmitted last week a complete package with requested changes from both the board and Cliff Bomer, who is the board's architectural third-party peer reviewer. So we have cleaned up the plans and submitted them all with appropriate dates to avoid confusion. Outside of that parking, which was identified at last hearing, it's just been incorporated into all the plans, including the landscape plan. Nothing else has changed from their prior submission. So I know there were some questions as regard to the unit mix and making sure that that's clearly identified, which it is on the cover page, and making sure that there's consistency among the drawings. So we're here again tonight to kind of just, you know, bring it all together. This is the final set, we believe, you know, through the board and the peer review and our consultants as well as hard work over the last eight months and arriving, you know, and also, you know, comments from Chief Nodell and Captain Cotty at the Abington Fire Department to arrive at this plan. So we don't have anything prepared tonight. This is more, you know, we came back as of courtesy two weeks to make sure that there's consistency among the plans.
So Cliff sent out a revised update on August 19th. I think that was provided to you folks as well, correct?
Correct, yes.
So you haven't changed anything as a result of his input?
So as a result of that, he asked to see on the elevations, the mechanicals, which have been provided on the elevations, the elevator head height on the roof. He asked to make sure to clarify the unit mix as well as parking count, which has been provided on the plans. So where we felt there were comments that needed to be addressed, they've been addressed.
So as far as defining what the buffer zone is and the trees that are there and that sort of thing, you...
We can speak to that. I mean, the landscape plan has been updated with what detail we feel is needed.
But it doesn't address what he said, I don't think, does it? As far as defining what is there now as far as deciduous...
No, correct.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Sec at this point?
Solar energy. Is there any solar energy going to be provided on the roofs, put on the roofs?
We haven't looked into that. We've certainly looked into it at other projects. We're currently constructing a project in Wayland, and that'll be our first project where we're going to have solar there. So it's kind of new to us. We're learning about it, and that's something that, you know, we're happy to look into and see if it fits this project.
Anybody else from the board have any questions at this point?
Mark's point.
Amy, any...
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So at this point, I'm going to open it. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open up to the public and if anybody has any public input. Yes, chief?
Thank you. I was not able to make the last meeting. I did watch it. Captain Cotty was here, but I did email some of my concerns then because I feel like with this project, it's always two steps forwards or one step back or vice versa. So I agree with Mark. We did have pretty much an agreement with the fire department, with a lot of the plot area, with the vehicle turning radius, the, you know, some of the concerns we had with that. But then, since that time when we met with them, these plans have been drastically altered again with the addition of a fifth story, a partial fifth story, I should say, as well as a couple of other issues that came up in town, which may not even be the jurisdiction of this board, but I'll at least address it. So one of my concerns, and I think Amy may have taken care of it, or you may have, I wasn't sure if they increased the overall unit count. I don't believe they did, but possibly the bedroom. Hope you guys can at least get a confirmation on that tonight because I'm concerned about the parking, if that's the case, with the addition of that fifth story. When we were discussing the possibility of adding a fifth story, this is going back several meetings now, and our consultant questioned, my interpretation would be is the only way we would really consider adding a fifth story would be a decent, fair trade-off with trying to reduce the overall footprint of this project to get more green space or vehicle maneuvering space or whatever. I don't think that happened. I think they just took from the smaller building and just added portion of that on top of the other building with no change whatsoever. I kind of take exception to that. You know, now we're adding a whole new fifth story. This is literally going to be the biggest occupied building in the town of Abington, the highest. That's a concern that we have. I think it would have been a fair trade-off if overall we reduce some of the congestion on this very tight project, but I don't believe that occurred. If I'm wrong on any of these at any point, you know, they can, you know, counter that, but I'm not seeing that. I'm just kind of seeing a relocation of one story to another. I also have a differing opinion from our consultant on the flat roofs. This is based only on my experience with the fire department, with other flat roof buildings that we have in town that have leaked over the years, and they have since added a rain roof to that. So my concern is if we're adding a fifth story and now it's a flat roof, and in the future at 10, 15, 30 years, this begins to leak, and now they're going to add a peaked roof on top of that, assuming they'd even let it, we have seen that in this town. So that's a concern. This could even be bigger. I also have to at least go on record, and I'm not an architect, and I'll defer somewhat to the building commissioner on this, however, from my own experience, those of us that worked through the winter of 2014, 15 and responded to numerous flat roofs that were literally collapsing under the heavy snow load, and this building is going to be a lightweight construction, I'm assuming, with a lot of people living under it, I at least want to go on record that I have a concern on that. The other thing I just want a confirmation on is the elevator count. Looking at the plans, I'm seeing, I believe I'm seeing two, at least two for the larger building. The smaller building, unless I'm missing it, appears as only one. Can you just confirm that?
Correct.
There's only one elevator?
There's one with smaller ones.
Okay.
And there are two in the larger one.
Okay. I'm going to want minimum two elevators per building.
Exactly. We spent a lot of time talking about last time. There's only one elevator in this building. It's a 2-story building with a lot of people in it, getting either everyday occupants up and down. In the event that elevator goes down or disappears or makes this, that's an issue. We will literally have to carry people up and downstairs. Mainly, however, for public safety to do this. Somebody needs to see if the air in the third floor of this building, the second floor, and that elevator is out of commission, that is not well well protected whatsoever. We need a minimum of those two folks. We have some old buildings that are being deposited with one elevator, which can be directly down.
So I would please implore this board to require a minimum of at least two elevators per building on that. I believe the final thing that I have is, may not be your jurisdiction, I'm aware of that, however, since we have met just in the last week, the Abington Fire Department has officially been asked by the Abington Rockland Water Department to cease using any water for training because of the severe water shortage. They did give us a way out. We actually can use a standpipe in Rockland, but it's almost in Norwell. So for me to do that, realistically, it will be an overtime issue. That's not really the concern of this board, but it's not realistic. My concern, serious concern for public safety, I do not know if they have been granted water for this project yet. However, if we don't have water that we can even train with in this town, and we're looking at adding such, you know, this is just one of many other buildings, this is a concern. And there is no end in sight with this. The Water Department basically told me if we have a decent winter, which means a bad winter, which we're all looking forward to, not, that may resolve the water crisis.
So we're already maxed out of water. And I'm not talking about watering your lawn. I live in town too. That's something I'll deal with. I'm talking about putting fires out. We're already at the level where we're concerned that we don't have enough water flow, fire flow to deal with anything. And now we're going to have this one, that, I have a concern with that. We don't know if that's really the jurisdiction of the board, but at least that's what we're going to do.
Or at that point, how can they provide the sprinkler pumps? No, Bob. Right before he's saying he's talking...
Let you come up and ask a question, so we just want to keep some of it.
I can answer your question directly, Mr. Chairman. It's an excellent question.
Can you just repeat the question?
A question from Yanni Closepool. How can we provide fire protection? Fire flow, we need some calculations on what would be required for sprinkler flow, depending on how much of the building is burning, if it's one floor, two floors, a level. This is a massive calculation that goes into that. A massive theoretical number that is able to depend on the size of the water mains endings. However, that is also something we hope we never actually use. As opposed to the daily water usage that everybody's going to use daily, just everybody's dealt with it. I'm not sure. It's a little bit confusing. It's, when there is enough water theoretically to take care of a fire in the event that happens, which we hope...
...never does. However, as opposed to the constant daily use of all of the water that's going to be used by all of the residents here, that's a reality that will be used. Does that answer your question?
I know, I was recently on. Basically, had to downsize the size because the water mains were not going to be able to provide the sprinkler pumps with enough volume, need be, to suppress a system of sprinkler heads.
I can't speak on that one specifically. In this instance, I do believe we're going to have the water mains to do this. If this was a town that does not have major invisible water supplies, like some harbors on these towns, if they don't have water, that's, you know, at that point, you're building a large water tank, water site, and you're drafting from that like a factory. That really doesn't apply here.
Okay. This was just in Brantley. They had to downsize the scale of the building they were doing.
I can't speak to that. It could be worse located than the mains, the size of the building. Yeah, I, you know, specifically, that's not a concern with this.
Thanks, Chief. Anybody else in the public wants to make any comments? Yes, Ron?
Well, now on 49 Walnut Street. First, a question to the board. Is this like the final hearing or looking at closing the hearing tonight?
I think the applicant wants us to close the hearing, so if they don't want to continue it, then we would have to close it.
I'm trying to come to it. But just a few comments or whatever. I mean, first of all, the water, I mean, yeah, I'm into the water for meetings also. I mean, they say that basically they, you know, the infrastructure should be able to supply their project, but, you know, they're also worried about the age of the infrastructure. They want to, you know, engineers talk about that. So, and plus, like they said, I mean, the greenhouse is a moratorium, nobody's getting any water, but you have to. So, you know, there's some big concern on that. Again, you know, this project just doesn't provide any benefit to the town in any way. It just, you know, adds to all our taxes and our services. I mean, from day one, this company was sold, you know, that this project was too big. And since then, they've been tweaking parking, green space, this and that. First started off with three buildings with 236 units. Then they cut down to two buildings with 236 units. Then they took a story off one building, added it to another, because they're the one across the street, and it still adds up to 236 units. All of these problems could have been solved if they just shrunk it by even 30, 40 units, or maybe 50, you know. I don't know, it would be better. But, you know, they just had, you know, they haven't really wanted to work with us on this. I mean, at the beginning, they didn't even want us to have parking on Monty Ham, which, you know, they same person, you know, because he's standing in the middle of Monty Ham, and they pitched a car park, and he decided, hey, I'll get my car done. So when it comes time for the board to make their decision, I hope that, you know, I know, you can't just help not use it because then they can go to the Housing Board of Appeals or whatever, and they might get their project approved that that way, and then you can have this whole big project. So the way you fit this double meeting is smaller, I hope you're able to do it, and you do. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Wayne Smith, 120 South Road, Abington. We were able to see the recently revised plan stated August 24 revision for stamp received on August 1st, 2022 at 10:57 by the Town Board of Commerce. How much time do we have to review these points? Many of these issues brought up at previous meetings were not addressed and still remain unanswered. Center Avenue Realty Trust realizes that this is a comprehensive plan. Its goal is to encourage affordable housing. It is our opinion that would cause stonewall on purpose, so the decision has to be made by the town at required. It would seem that they do not care whether it is approved or denied. If denied, they can bring it to the Commonwealth Housing Appeal Committee, where they can get additional variances for the development. On November 23rd, 2004, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts presented a smart growth leadership award to the Town of Abington for 2003 Transit Oriented Development District, TOB, and the Central Business District, CBD. With this development before us, it was seen that this TOB district was an error in judgment if turned into a 4D development. The amount of open space for families with the present proposal is not appropriate. We are sure that this is no place to raise a family. And we are sure that Center Avenue's property will be used by children that will be looking for a place to play. At the meeting on August 18th, the developer's representatives said all that would be required from the zoning regulations was a six-foot dance park. I have the Abington's zoning law, by zoning bylaws, with me tonight and will read it exactly if necessary. But to paraphrase, 175566 bus strip, this location requires a bus strip of at least 20 feet in width in the form of natural row trees, if existing, or a natural row of trees and thick planting, or a double row of evergreen trees, not less than eight feet in height, and it goes on, and it goes on. Or eventually, a solid screen-type fence, six feet in height, complemented...
...by suitable plantings. I emphasize complemented by. Of particular note, E, the owner shall be required to maintain buffer strips in a clean, safe manner. Any trees or plantings which die shall be replaced. With the filled slope area shown on sheet C101, between the parking lot fence to the tree trunks, where there will be a loss of existing trees in the buffer strips because of the fill being placed. Also, 17565, a natural tree coverage and other desirable natural foliage shall be preserved on all lots to the maximum extent possible. B, outside of areas of actual construction activity, all trees of greater than five inches diameter at four feet above the ground should be preserved. If a lot is covered with mature trees, five inches breast heights diameter, they should not be thinned by more than 50%. That is why it is important to have, as referred to on sheet L101, the list of trees located by Allen and Major on 7/11/22. As it says, see the engineering plan set for additional information. We have never seen this list, nor have we seen buffer plantings and so forth note, eventually ending to be submitted to the planning board. And that probably, at this point, is a ZBA issue. This is not an ordinary development and should require proper buffering, multi-family including a five-story building with little open space. Which brings us to the easement along the Prague Street side of the development. On May 6th, 2019, Summer Street, Zero Summer Street proposal came before the planning board with 165 units. At that time, the developer and their attorney denied that the easement exist existed. It took some time for that issue to be acknowledged. On August 4th, 2020, the developer introduced Wood Partners to the planning board. Eventually, the developer withdrew the application without prejudice. As stated at earlier meetings, Center Avenue Realty Trust would just as soon keep the present easement. You know how the developer has presented the easement. We do not want to cut the trees down, but we do not know what the future will bring. This easement is of value to the trust. Because of this, when the owner asked Center Avenue how much it would cost to buy the easement, we gave them a figure. They said they would talk with Wood Partners. They came back to us and said Wood Partners agreed with the price, and they would draw up the papers. As you know, a week later, they notified us that they were cutting the agreed amount in half and gave us until the end of the week to agree. Obviously, we did not. Wood Partners at these meetings continue to make statements about the easement, their opinions. We have said little in response and do not agree with everything they say. The moved easement on the plan sheet C102, now submitted, are not practical or acceptable to Center Avenue. It just will not work. We cannot imagine a purchaser of our property considering this as a roadway going through parking lots and around buildings and in one-way directions. Simple answer is for Wood Partners to purchase the easement. It is probably minimum cost. The trust is probably foolish to sell it at the original price agreed upon. Please do not put us in a situation at a later date to have this buffer strip cut down. Thank you for the opportunity to express the trust's concern.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I don't have any questions. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Anybody else in the, from the public who wants to make any comments? Yes, Pam?
Hi, Pam Howe, 149 Walnut Street. I'm just wondering if the other boards and officials in town were sent notifications on this and if there were any responses from them?
We have sent notices to, yeah.
Like police and schools and, I mean, I've never, I haven't seen the town manager here. I haven't seen any selectmen here. You know, it affects the whole town, and I can't imagine that with the size of this, it's not going to affect, you know, police response. It's not going to affect schools. They have two and three bedrooms. There's going to be children in there. And from what I understand, my kids are out of the schools right now, but what I understand, the schools are already, you know, getting overcrowded. So I was just wondering if they had any responses to notices. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Does the applicant want to make any further comments?
No. We're all just hearing.
Okay. So at this point, I guess we can close the hearing, Amy. Is that what you would recommend or...
Yes, I did have, I did have a question regarding the waiver list. There's no waiver setback, and I just wanted to make sure you looked at that. Is that correct? You need all the setback requirements. So people need setback at least 35 feet from, oh, sorry, 50 feet from... Sorry. Sorry, I'm looking at the frontage. You need the frontage requirement based on Monty Ham or Summer.
Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates. We need the frontage requirement on Summers, this project, but there are additional frontage potential on Monty Ham, but we're referencing Summer.
Got it. Okay. That was my only question on the waivers. And then the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, is that I do recall in the beginning of this process that someone, I think at the time it was the chairman of the, the chairperson of the school committee did commit the...
Chief, that's right. So...
And the town manager, that's something.
So why don't you explain what next?
So our next step is that we will close the hearing for tonight and we'll schedule meeting for deliberation. I will, I will provide a draft decision at that meeting, and that draft decision will have options for the board, whether they want to condition this project based on the proposed scenario, or if the, if the board wants to base their decision, condition their decision on a lower amount of units, perhaps a lower amount of structures, less structures.
So that is an option?
That is an option. So I think that there's been sufficient concern with regards to the congestion and the density on the property that would bring it into the realm of a lower concern, particularly you have comments from the fire department, you have our own consultants' comments with regard to some of the civil, civil engineering aspects of this, for example, snow storage, which I know doesn't seem like a big deal, but it really is a big deal to think about to 2014, 2015, when we had, and even other winters, you know, you have to pay for the snow storage. Every developer will claim that they're going to truck it off-site. The big question is when will it be trucked off-site? Will it be trucked off-site in time for emergency response? That's why Sean is very anxious.
What about the parks on the easement? What are they going to use as...
I mean, I think that they can, but the question is, have they, have they screened, have they screened the properties enough from, you know, by having the building be there? You know, they did, and not only that, they did add a story to Building A.
So...
I think that the plan, I think, and I don't want to speak for Sean, but I think when you're at the meeting and Sean is throwing out some suggestions to them, I think he was thinking of eliminating Building B and making Building A a bit higher. Instead, they did not eliminate Building B, and they still made... you do not eliminate the building B and the school.
That was a tough suggestion as well.
Yes, right. So this is a little.
I'm going to give everybody one more shot before we close the hearing. Anybody else have anything else to say? Yes, sir. So just, just so everybody knows, once we close the hearing, we cannot take any more testimony. So we can't accept anything else. So if you want to say anything, please do so today.
Jay Schneider, 66 Parker Street. I had a very in-depth discussion throughout the week with the health department in regards to an issue within the town of pests and rats. It is well-known that our wooded areas are heavily infested. One concern I have, and I know I speak for all the neighbors and the butters, the minute they drop a blade in there, any pest and wildlife, where do you think they're going to? They run right to all the houses and everything right next to the property. I know, currently doesn't have anything in legislation. Health Department was very intrigued with the idea of trying to create something. I know, wouldn't be able to be created in time for this to follow us, but anytime they are cleared to commiserate, take care of butters and pest control. I know when Green Bush came through and several other major projects and budding towns, that was something that was set in place to take care of neighbors. Nobody wants to be dealing with rats and mice running into your house at cost of a project going on next door. So that is something, I don't know if that could be accommodated as a condition, but it's going to have heavy impact on everyone around. If you go right through that T-lot, now you see the rats guarding. They're jumping off the rails and they're in that area. On top of that, like everyone else is saying, I don't know how our school systems are going to accommodate this. We're all ready to capacity. Our primary schools are all ready to fulfill. If this is a low-income housing that's aimed towards families, I don't know how the state could say, yes, go ahead with the low income or family housing, if we don't have the resources to provide the families as it sits now. I know this is all stuff that's been drawn up over and over again, but it seems to keep me pushed away. I understand the predicament that the hands caught at the town, but I want these to be taken into aspect on this, because, yeah, you can say it's going to affect 112 residents' houses. How many people have kids in school? 236 units. That's an additional 236 families throughout the school. And when we spoke to the school board, they said, you want to do what? Months ago. I wish they were still more heavily active, but they were obviously parked out with this. Just speaking with someone, they said that the enrollment in active schools are all ready out this year, just from other projects and other families moving to town. So I don't know how, and I agree with, said earlier, that making a low income is really pushing away from the available resources of a transportation development. If that's what that property is supposed to be, I don't want to lie there on this road. But I understand the answer to that, but if we can try to work with this and gets, get it handled in the best way I think it needs to be. But, you know, it scares me that this big of a building could be a ticking time bomb or a fireball, and from the sounds of it, the fire department saying they wouldn't be able to handle it with the resources available. And that's a scary thought, to know that that is less than 100 feet from your house. You know, I don't want anybody to sleep knowing that. And I just want to make sure all of these things are being taken into consideration in any decisions, because it's obvious there's a lot of disregard for our town.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Friday, I need to address some of those things. The first thing is that this is not a low income. This is affordable housing, which is, which is vast in different, this is 25 percent of this will go to person, the families with 80 percent handling. So this is not low income, the majority of this would be market rate. And furthermore, this board is not allowed to consider impacted schools. The general law, chapter 40D, specifically provides that it has not a local concern. In this, in this context, that has not a local concern. It's very, it's very, you know, it's something that's brought up every single application that I press it on. And it's unfortunate, but it is a way, so that we cannot keep that into consideration.
Yes, Chief.
I just want you to respond. I just don't want to leave the impression that we think this is going to be a major fire hazard. I don't have that impression, to be honest with you. It's going to be built to code, it's going to be fully sprinkled. I do feel we have adequate water for fire protection. The concern is, it's the domestic water usage, which is also going to be drawing off the overall supplies in towns. That's the difference. I'm not, any building could conceive will be lost by that. That's not my concern with this, to be honest with you, but I did just try to give you a little bit of a major concern.
It's kind of hard to believe that, looking at Union Point, the new construction, the ones in Dorchester, the new constructions, all these new constructions that went down the same route, it went up in flames like they did.
The most vulnerable time for any building is when it is under construction, because the fire protection system is not fully optimal, depending on what point that is.
Great, thank you. Yes?
John Romney, 84 Parker Street. I was just curious if there's been an updated traffic study. I know there's one done earlier, and a little cheap one, they include Route 18, with the excessive traffic for school back, people going back and losing where the original one was done, and with the recent accidents with Summer Street and Plummer Street increasing. I didn't know if there's been an updated one, or we should hold off till a vote, until an updated study for the traffic has been done.
I'm not sure the date of the last one. Does anybody here know when the last one was submitted?
I believe they said they were going to look into doing more and include Route 18 as well.
I don't think Route 18 was included, correct?
I think they're, I know she did ask for that. And you guys asked for it as well.
I don't think they were required to do Route 18. I think it should. Do you guys know? Anybody at petitions know when the last traffic study was done?
I think it was a long time ago.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago. Anybody else? Yep, Pam?
Hi, Pam Howe, 149 Walnut Street. I was going to bring up traffic. Actually, when you did, and I just have a comment. The traffic's crazy in Abington right now. I mean, with Route 18, you know, four lanes, it's, it's a speedway. Summer Street, it's, it's crazy. I mean, cars are just blowing through Summer and Walnut all the time. It's a lot of units, it's a lot of people, they're going to have cars, but they're also going to be walking. I mean, you know, there are places that are within walking distance, and I think it just needs to be taken into account that, just in the general area, there's been a lot of pedestrian accidents lately. And I just think it needs to be taken into account, you know, the traffic, the pedestrians. I'm hoping if it goes through that, you know, you might have some type of signage. I know they have like the blinking signs, you know, caution, something like that, because there are a lot of units, there are going to be a lot of people, and I don't think you'd want to see, you know, people being hurt, you know, walking from this development. I mean, you're going to build, you're going to be buying, you're going to be dealing with it, and I just, I don't think it should be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
June 21st was the last time submitted to the trust.
Okay, yes.
Lani, 18 Washington Street. Does this plan include sidewalks from Monty Ham crossing over they stop up to Walnut Street because there's no sidewalks? And if there's any children here, they aren't going to be able to walk that way. So it's so dangerous to walk in that section. Does the plan include sidewalks?
There's no sidewalks on.
Can there be, can there be something put into the plan that they have to put sidewalks in, adding 236 more units?
I guess I defer to the town council as to whether that would be a condition that we could include.
Well, we would have to have, we would have to have a real basis for that, because it would be awesome, which I'm going to have to request. Thank you.
Anybody else?
If not, we're going to be going to the board as far as closing the hearing.
Yeah, just for closing.
This is the closing.
Okay.
Anybody else? Take a motion to close the hearing.
I'm motion to close the hearing. On the, on the other side of the station, Zero Summer Street, 149 Summer Street.
That's fine, I think that's, is there a second, a second? Any discussion?
If not, I'll just say, all right, propose it's unanimous.
Now I need to pick a date to meet with Amy so we can deliberate and discuss the decision. Just a minute. What are you thinking? Couple weeks or?
Yeah, at least. So, we have, we have until October 10th, sorry, October 10th. That would be four days, we just stayed the first, it might be eleven, I have to.
Yeah, around there.
But, that's a holiday, so let's go, let's say October 17th. So what I would need is the first, I would need one meeting, and then we'd need another meeting closer to then, just to be able to, just to be able to finalize the decision. So.
What's your time?
So what about the 15th or 22nd? When is your, when's your real, when's your greatest meeting? Okay. So either one of those.
15?
That's three in a row, three weeks in a row. Yeah, okay, 15.
9:15 at 7 o'clock. Do you want to pick a second?
Yeah, we'll wait till after.
So our next meeting will be September 15, 7 o'clock here at the town hall. I'm not sure if this is going in, I mean, if this room is available, but we'll find it.
It's going to be in someplace.
Yeah. Any else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to give a chair.
I'll give you a chair.
Second, second. All in favor? All right, propose. Thank you.